All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, if you'll take the roll call, please.
Okay, Mr. Braun.
Present.
Mr. Moore.
Present.
Ms. Pace Snook.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Ms. Seabacher.
Present.
Mr. Schiverdecker.
Here.
Ms. Stone.
Present.
Seven council members present, one absent.
And Pastor Bruce here to be our indication. Lead us in pledge of allegiance.
Present, sir. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I want to begin this prayer with some praise and thanks for the rain slowing down in the heartland of America so that the river could begin to recede and folks could begin to get back in their homes and businesses along the flood plain. That's the first praise. The second one is that our neighbors and friends in Jefferson City and Eldon were hit pretty hard with those tornadoes. But we had thousands of them come to Mid-Mo and work and help. And, Lord, most of the recovery of debris has cleaned up. Now the building renewing of the facilities, the structures and homes. Thank you, Lord, for blessing Mid-Missouri with the kind of people that we have to help their neighbor. I'm grateful for that. I want to thank you for the beautiful weather this day, for this body who leads our city. I thank you, Lord, for our mayor and council persons, our administrators and department heads, and for our police department and fire department and all of our first responders, the folks that let us live in safety by day and by night. I'm grateful for all who serve this community. I would pray today that you provide good weather and a safe venue for the street fair that's coming up. I especially pray for public safety officers, both fire and police and our ambulance district, as they monitor and provide a safe venue for all the folks that will come to this celebration. On the city service staff, Lord, there are many folks that we pray for perpetually. Tonight, I remember but not limit this list to just who I name. I want to pray for Chief Myers. I want to pray for Chief Kofelt and for his family and their healing. I lift up Mr. and Mrs. Reclu, Mr. Moore, and any other connected to the city family who needs your touch on this beautiful day. For this session tonight and for those that have come from the community to participate, it is my prayer that working together is one of the real strength of this community. Bless this session, discussions that are held, decisions that are made, Lord, that they be pleasing to you. We all agree that we are through Christ our Lord. Amen. A prayer, please. Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we'll call for any comments from visitors. If you'd like to speak to the council, just give us your name and address. Not seen anyone come forward, we'll move on. Next on the agenda, we have our consent agenda. Tonight for approval, we have the reappointment of Carmen Brant to the Human Rights Commission, the approval of a request from David Bieber for the Eighth Annual Independence Day Parade on Thursday, July 4th. This request has been reviewed and approved by Chief Myers. And I believe that's all. Are there any that would like to be taken off the table or questions or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, I don't need to have anything removed, but I did want to make a comment to the council about some information that I was retrained on last week at the MML training. Wanted to remind the council members that the appointments that we do under the consent agenda, if you're related to them to the fourth degree and you vote yes to appoint someone to one of our boards or councils or committees, you're actually in conflict with Missouri state law and it will require you to forfeit your council seat. So just, we've kind of gotten into a rhythm and a routine with approving the consent agenda. And I just wanted to remind anybody that that would put you at risk if you approve the consent agenda and we approved an appointment under that relationship.
And I'll pass that along to Ms. Reclu as well. Thank you for that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Are there any other comments? I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no. Consent agenda passes. We'd have no unfinished business. Is that still the case?
No, it is not the case.
That's not the case? Okay. Sorry. Under unfinished business, we have the rec center discussion.
This was added to the agenda as a couple of council persons wanted to discuss the rec center and some of the financing options and some of the rec center from that angle, how the intent was to finance it. Can I see Clyde?
Yeah. The packet I gave you tonight is just kind of an updated version of the last packet I gave you. I've added some operational plans and budgets in there just for your review, to kind of give you an idea of what it might look like in terms of operating budgets and how we'll staff the different facilities and what some of the revenue and expenses would be. But other than that, it's very similar to the last packet I gave you at the last meeting.
And there's quite a bit to digest here to be able to really analyze anything that's new, I guess. So I think the intent was if we had a model that came in at five million, we would sort of have a plan in place. And same thing if it comes in at six million or even seven million, where we are going to get the money from.
And I would just refer you to page 12 of that document. We've always been kind of operating in that project budget of six to eight million. Every time we work with the architects, every time we work with our city engineers and we start talking cost and we're estimating cost, you know, that's kind of where we're at. From a finance standpoint, if we did a lease purchase for 20 years, probably comfortably with the revenue that's projected to generate from these two facilities plus the sales tax revenue, we could probably do something comfortably in that 7.3, 7.3 million. So obviously if it comes, if the two projects come at eight, then we have to have some discussions on what can we do about, do we want to do one project or the other? Or do we want to look for ways to find other funding? So again, those are, once we know the final cost for these two projects, we'll better address those questions.
The numbers that I've kind of tried to figure out, talk about the operating budget for the rec center and the expected revenue, which is about even.
It's about even. It's about a break even proposition.
Right. So now we have a $7 million facility that we have to take a loan on. If we're looking at a 20-year loan, we're looking at $600,000, $700,000 a year in expenses? Somewhere in that realm?
You're looking at a debt payment of, you know, $485,000. The key part of all this is if you don't do the baseball complex, you lose that potential revenue. You lose that. So then you have to, then you have to probably scale back the community center a little bit more because you do not have that revenue.
So we have to spend another $2 million on the hopes that we can bring in enough baseball teams to...
Not necessarily the host, but, you know, 12 years of research, surveys, professional and personal experience, research and studies done by consultants that we paid money. So it's not just, hey, let's build a baseball complex and hope we make some money. There's been a lot of work put into it. There's models all across the state, all across the country. I just went to a tournament this weekend for my daughter's softball team. Forty-seven teams at $480 a team. It's, we're in a good location. It's popular. It's a growing trend. More and more softball and youth baseball players are going to the competitive side versus the recreational side. And parents are willing to spend that money to do that.
So these are traveling teams?
Traveling teams, yes.
In the area, so high school age?
Or 10 years old?
Yeah, probably as low as eight. And girl softball tends to go up to about 18U. The boys kind of start to taper off at around 16U. But there is some 17 and 18U baseball.
Which you also bring into the picture, men's slow pitch. You bring in coeds. You bring in many other facets.
So we've looked into the hiring of somebody to manage the baseball complex to get all of these teams and the tournaments organized?
Yes.
And I'm sure we're going to have to have overtime for our grounds crews?
Yeah. And I've kind of outlined some of that plan. I think you need a full-time person to manage the facility because you're going to need somebody to, somebody that can be there seven days a week through the summer. Somebody's going to go out and market and promote and get teams to come here.
Right.
So you will need a full-time person for that, you know, and that position needs to be incentive-based, kind of like what we're doing with our clubhouse manager. We need to encourage them to bring in more revenue. And I think probably from a maintenance standpoint, we need another full-time maintenance guy. I mean, we've needed another full-time maintenance person for 10 years.
Well, you're going to have, from what I remember, baseball teams are going to run to late Friday night, all day Saturday and to late Saturday night and like half to three quarters of Sunday. And we're going to need people to maintain the fields for all three of those periods of time.
Yeah. And longer than that because we'll be having league nights Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday to bring in additional revenue. And we may have competitive leagues, we may have recreational leagues. And, you know, a lot of that, people that get the fields ready, that chalk the fields, that drag the fields, a lot of that can be part-time seasonal. So, and when you run a concession stand, a lot of that can be part-time seasonal. So your big staffing expense are your, I guess what we'd call the athletic supervisor or facility supervisor, and then probably an additional full-time maintenance person.
The other thing to keep in mind is we do have ball fields here in town now. However, if you have children that are close in age but they're playing on different teams, even within our own rec department, try to make two or three fields to satisfy your children. Or you and your husband split up, or if your husband's working, then you've got some other parent that's watching your kid for you. If it's all at one set of fields, it sure makes it a whole lot nicer as a parent to be able to look back and forth between two fields. And I think we have quite a bit of that going on.
Yeah. And that's a challenge we've had in the last 15 years and it's probably been going on before that. I mean, I have three children. It's difficult when they're in three different places. And so a lot of parents, they'll miss one kid's game or something. Another thing is we have coaches that coach two different teams in two different leagues. So they're running around trying to make the different games. We're trying to work the schedules to accommodate them. So I think, and the other thing I think is that if you have all these people in a central location, you know, nowadays, there's kind of a growing trend for spectators and parents to misbehave a little bit. And I think when you have a big, large crowd and you have all these people at one location, there's less of a tendency for that to happen. I think people are going to act a little better because they don't want to be seen acting out by other people. So that's another benefit. Again, it will benefit the community and the fact that it'll put everything in a central location. It will also benefit the community and it will bring lots and lots of visitors to this community. You can look at the numbers. I mean, you're talking 12 players a team, 47 teams. That's a lot of people. That's a lot of money coming into the town. They're going to stay at hotels. Not all of them are going to stay at hotels, but some of them are going to stay at hotels. They're going to eat food here. They're going to shop here. They're going to fill their gas, fill their car up with gas. So it would help the economy. So, and I think you may see more restaurants, more hotels come in if the economy improves.
I personally can tell you that over the years of my kids playing travel ball, I averaged probably $5,000 a summer chasing my children. I wouldn't give it up for anything. I wish I still had them doing it. Last year alone, I coached a travel softball team and out of my pocket, I spent over $2,500 to coach. We played in three different states and none of them were local because there wasn't facilities to do it locally. I shouldn't, that's not true. We did play at 63 Diamonds, but one tournament. A lot of travel in it and people are doing it every weekend.
And I think people want to play the competitive or the traveling ball because, you know, that's kind of the trend, but they don't necessarily love to travel. You know, people in Columbia, Jeff City, Fulton, they go to St. Louis, Kansas City because they're looking for a little bit of variety. But I think if you had more variety in central Missouri, they'd stay in this area. They'd spend money here. They'd attend more tournaments in this area.
Several times you've mentioned grants that we could possibly go get. Have you looked into the possibility of grants?
Yeah, I mean, we look pretty much weekly. We're looking at grants. It's hard to find grants for a lot of money. You know, we found one down here for Anderson Field. I think we ended up getting $10,000 to help with the fencing. So there's small grants for facility improvement. Bill sent us one, I think about a week ago. It looked like it might work for us for the community center. And then, once you dug into it, our grant person dug into it, it wasn't quite, we wouldn't be a good candidate for it. So yes, we're constantly looking and we'll keep looking.
This might be a question for Kathy. Kathy, the sewer tax, is that going to be consistent around the 3.75 to four and a quarter a year? Do you feel confident that...
Our hopes are that it goes up some.
Sure.
Yeah. And Kathy can correct me, but I think last year we were around 4.20, 4.25. And it looks like, just looking at the first quarter, was it?
It's going like quarters.
I think we'll be close to that this year if it stays true.
$400,000 a year will support a $6 million debt load. If we look at a 25, if we look at the 25-year, four and a half percent interest, we can finance $6 million on $400,000 a year.
Yeah, but will the bank give us a 25-year loan? I thought their limit was 20 at a fixed rate.
When, yeah, well, everybody's correct. They will only fix it for the first 20 and then, I don't know, like in year 19 or something, they would tell us what the rate would be for the final five.
5.3.
Kathy saying no.
I can't hear you.
She was saying that the fixed rate was only guaranteed for the first 10. And I think a banker I talked to was, that was something similar to what they said too. So...
20 years brings us to 5.3 million. So between 20 and 25 years, the current tax rate will support between 5.3 and $6 million.
So that would rule out future swimming pool, pretty much. And thinking about 20 years down the road, I foresee capital improvements that would have to be made to a building like that, to the rec center. Maybe not necessarily much to the ball fields, but, you know, roofing, flooring, things like that go bad, so...
But again, that's just the tax levy that would support that. We've got the existing Parks and Rec budget. We've got the opportunity for increased revenue. You know, it's not, our money's, you know, there's a lot of pie in the sky in this, but also our money's not finite there either.
And I think you run that risk with all, you run that risk with this building, the warehouse, the fire station, the police station. The thing that none of those projects had that we have is we have a source of revenue that's going to be there and it's going to be there forever, we hope. Theoretically, it should be there forever. And like Rick said, you know, you hope it grows over time and we're able to pay these debts off faster.
Well, and you haven't added back in the projected revenues for both facilities yet either.
True. And that table on page 12, it shows it with just the sales tax revenue and then it factors in, the fourth column over, factors in the projected revenue.
And there's other developments, opportunities for the softball complex location. We've talked about maybe putting the cross-country track around the outside of that. Well, that'll bring in a couple of different invitationals. You know, the disc golf folks are chomping at the bit to have some location to create a disc golf course. And they're saying that'll bring in all kinds of tournament money. So, I mean, we, there's different things to look at.
Yeah. I mean, when we first started talking about this project, I mean, there was a lot of discussion about RV campgrounds, miniature golf and things like that. So I, there's opportunities for increased revenue if you want to add some things. I just, again, with the baseball complex, you got to go into it realistically and you got to, you got to realize it's going to take a year or two to grow. It's not going to be profitable right out of the gate. So you need to understand that going in. But if you run it right, if you got good staff, you got good umpires, the people will come. They'll come and they'll play if they have good experience. I think it benefits us that we're centrally located, we're next to two major highways. So I don't see us having a problem attracting teams and players to that facility.
Has anybody been out to Twin Oaks when it was in existence for boys' baseball? That was, to say the least, a non-desirable setup. And that, every single solitary weekend, he was slammed.
That guy made a bunch of money off of that.
Yes, he did. A ton of money. And it was a not-for-profit, but he charged an administration fee. He made a lot of money off of it.
And the thing we're dealing with now is that facility that John's talking about is no longer in existence. The owner passed away and his sons decided not to continue it. So, you know, there's a void there. And I think we're at a perfect time that we can fill that void.
So the bids, I guess, have gone out or have been published?
Well, the community center bid is out. The baseball complex is taking a little bit longer. We got two engineers that are working daily on it. They're running into some challenges. Some of the challenge is that there's a lot of other city projects going on. So they're doing the best they can. You know, Kyle may be able to talk more about what they're dealing with when they're trying to get this project done. But we're hoping, I don't want to tell you the timeline, but I'm hoping very soon we're going to get that one out for bid. So when the numbers come in, you can review both numbers at the same time.
Is the bid paperwork for the rec center construction costs or turnkey? I.e., is the building going to be furnished?
Yeah, pretty much.
As part of the bid?
Pretty much furnished. It includes the security system. I think we've set aside $150,000 for furnishings. Pretty much, it'll be ready to go when it's done.
So does everybody now feel comfortable with the financing and what that's going to look like?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Because you have to discuss how they're going to come up with it. Let me, it's right there. The beginning, I see what's right there, but I just still look. In the beginning of this, the advertisement you put out, you said wait till July, so we went along, waited until we get in proposals. Well, in my opinion, we advertised a project which a lot of people say is really nice. Well, people read, oh, it's going to have a rock wall. No. So my whole theory behind this, when I was talking about it, was that, hey, why not be realistic to the point that, okay, if it comes in at 7 million, I know a lot of you will say, let's bill it. My theory on it is that, you know, yes, we could probably borrow money, we could do that. But you have, so what I like for you and the park board to do, I like for you realistically go through and say, okay, this is what we have a list, but you know in the front what you're taking out, what we can promote, and pick a magical number. Because right now you said, keep waiting for the bids, but we all know about where it's going to come in at. And you do too. So let's not feed the public that we're going to have all this and then when we get to the project, well, we got to cut something. Or do we get in this great discussion to what do we sacrifice for the future city projects for this community building? So I like something that there is a realistic proposal, that the park board and you are willing to take something out of this facility to get into a certain price.
I think that the banquet center being bid as an alternate is a step in that direction. This isn't the Taj Mahal, like some people seem to think. It is, it's a facility that we worked very hard to narrow down the cost, to bring them down. Where it's a metal building, it's not a brick structure. It probably needs, everybody tells me it needs another basketball court, but we just don't have the space. We don't have the money for it. So it's, our goal was to develop a true multipurpose facility where you could have a lot of different activities going on at the same time, where you can meet the needs of the community. You know, those needs, those recreation trends were identified by a consultant. Again, we paid a lot of money for that consultant. We all thought he was the smartest guy in the world. So we have to trust that he knows what he's talking about. And that's how we designed this facility. If we build it too small, or if we spend 3 million or 4 million and it's not what the community wants or will use, then we wasted that money. We wasted that money on something that they won't use. So we got to try to give them something they'll use, something they want, within reason. And I think, I think we're very close to that bare minimum. We could get rid of the banquet side. I think if we got rid of the banquet part of it, we'd lose some revenue, we'd lose some revenue there. We could find other areas for banquets. But I think that is a need in this community because banquets are being held at basketball gyms, old car dealerships.
Old car dealership's garage.
Yeah, I mean, I think people would jump at that opportunity. I think you would, you would fill that space quite a bit. And again, this, all this stuff wasn't developed on a whim. It's years and years of research, surveys, master plans. The mayor asked us to come up with a 10-year master plan. The park board worked hard to do that. Then he said, okay, find a way to help fund these projects. We did that. So here we are. We're kind of at that stage where we're ready to move forward. And hopefully in a month, we're going to bring back some numbers to you. And they may be too big and we may have to make some tough decisions, but at least we'll be able to make an informed decision.
The key word in that statement was to help fund this project, not to fund this project. Okay? We need to remember that the half-cent sales tax was proposed to the people to help us fund three projects for Parks and Rec Department, not to fund them.
Can we go back to page six, Clyde? I, I'm sorry. On your new one, it may not be page six. Let me make sure. I'm looking at my old one. It is not. It's page 11 in the new one. So in that, in that box about two-thirds of the way down, since 2011, and tell me if I'm looking at this wrong, since 2011, the city has funded, and you don't have to have a calculator, $3,859,764. thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars of projects that we've done that the city has funded since two thousand and eleven. Is that?
Probably, yeah. I believe that's correct.
I, I added it. I'm not asking you to do that in your head. So, you know, if we've done that since two thousand and eleven, subsidizing, like Rick said, the, the, the difference or parts of it, seems like there's money to be found somewhere.
And I think that's the big question, is what money are we going to find?
Okay, well.
The, well, wait a minute. The four, the four hundred thousand we're getting in sales tax will not pay the debt service. We're gonna have to come up with one hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars more every year to fund just the debt service. The numbers that I'm seeing here for the operating budget is essentially a break-even thing. The revenue will pay for the operating budgets. So, we've still gotta fund the debt service. So, where are we gonna get the hundred and fifty thousand or two hundred, whatever the numbers are gonna be, here to pay the debt?
So, so Ballard, if we look back at that, at that period from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and sixteen, where we did the city warehouse, the animal shelter, the police station, the new fire station, where the projects that were done, that was three million, or three million eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand, that's four hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars a year on an average over the last eight years.
Okay.
You know?
Well, you still have seven, eight years on the warehouse. What you gonna bet that?
There, there's money, we find money, we figure out money when people, when we need something.
Well, that's fine.
You've promised, you've promised your constituency, you haven't maybe necessarily, but your constituents were promised these items. And I think that, that's forgotten at times.
One of my primary responsibilities, to me, to be on the council, is to be fiscally responsible. And I am not going to go buy a Ford pickup truck without figuring out how I'm gonna pay for it, first. And I don't wanna go spend seven million dollars to build a rec center until we figure out how to pay for it. I don't wanna agree to a, I mean, the rec center would be nice, but how are we gonna pay for it? That's gotta be the first thing.
And Ballard, I would say that, you know, using our most recent example of the city warehouse, we, we, we found answers to that question for the city warehouse.
And that's fine. Let's, that's what I'm asking.
And I presented you an answer to that question, not a, not a hundred percent answer, but as much as we can provide with that sales tax revenue.
Okay, that sales tax revenue is not covering a hundred percent of the debt service, correct?
So, you, you have to figure in some of the revenue that you're gonna generate.
Well, right now, the revenue looks like it's a break-even point.
But are you, if you're just talking about the community center, the baseball complex is projected to bring in a profit. So, there, there's.
Some amount, yeah.
So, that, that factors into the, the equation on how much you can take on.
And that's what I'm asking. What?
And I guess, Ballard, I guess, my, my perspective is, we don't need to only be asking Clay that question.
Well, I'm asking the city that question.
And that, I, I wanna make sure that that's clear. We need to be asking the city. You know, this community needs an investment. We need to invest in this community. There, I was born in this town, I was raised in this town, and we're playing on the same ballfields that I played on when I was ten. We've done an excellent job of keeping them up, but we need to take a step up. We need to invest in this community and to create something better than what we just always have. For the community center, we need to see this as an investment and find a way to invest in this community and make that step. Now, if it's a leap of faith, let's make that leap of faith. If it's a leap of faith with some informed information and some fiscal responsibility, absolutely. But we've got to do something. We have done nothing for twenty years because, well, we can't afford it. Well, who knows? Well, let's wait another two years. Let's say another five years. We are there. This is the point we need to make a step. We have discussed this and debated this through meeting after meeting after meeting, and we're finally at a point where at least one of the bids is out. I was really hoping both bids would be on the street line now.
Us too.
And we need to wait to have that information come back, to find out what the true cost is. And then we need Kathy to come up, and we need other people to come up. And we need to say, "Okay, I need twenty-five thousand dollars from something else. I need you to give up twenty thousand dollars over here so that we can have this, we can make this investment." I don't know what those answers are, but Clay's not the only one that's gonna be able to give us that answer.
And, or, or maybe the answer's not, where are we gonna find more money? Maybe the answer is, "Okay, we're not gonna do the banquet center just yet." Or maybe, "We're just gonna do five fields instead of six." So, I, I think there's a lot of variables, a lot of, lot of, uh, options. But I think we still need those, those final numbers to make those decisions.
You also need to be aware, though, you start cutting parts of buildings or fields or something like that, you're also cutting revenue, possibilities for revenue. So, if you take the banquet center out, there's revenue that's gone. You take the, the turf portion out, there's revenue that's gone. Every item that you remove from anything is going to remove revenue.
Right. Plus, it's not a dollar-for-dollar-per-square-foot removal. I mean, if it's, if the rec center costs two hundred dollars a square foot, and you take two thousand dollars or two thousand square feet off of it, that's not forty thousand dollars that you're gonna remove from it. It might only be twenty thousand.
Right.
And you cut two fields out of the complex, now we've gotta keep Anderson and Seaman and Murphy up to a level where we can play on them, not just practice on them. We've gotta, we've got other costs associated with not having a full complex, 'cause now we've gotta keep other fields going. It, it's.
Well, plus, that weekend may need six fields or five fields where we only have four.
And I think with any of these projects, we've, we do find ways to pull, maybe pull a little bit from the general fund to make it make sense, do in-kind work with our city crews at, you know, different levels to save costs. Um, but those are just, I think, things that we're, we wanna see with eyes wide open going into this, know that we're, we're gonna hurt, we're gonna bleed a little bit from this. Are we willing to do that? So, I think tonight, we've maybe peeled a little bit more away. I, I don't know.
When are we going to start discussing budgets for next year?
Robert?
Probably, uh, Robert will be starting on those in August. You'll probably see a draft, uh, first meeting in October, that's maybe the fir- first read, the second meeting in October, and finish it up in November.
Now, all these items on this list was, as I remember, it was in the papers, people put what their desire wants and needs. Each one of these, that's a false advertisement side date, this is what the people ask for. These were picked out from the park board and other people, but, uh, some of these didn't even get fifty votes, you know, like some of them didn't. But I don't think it's un- unbelievable or impossible for you to tell me then, "I'll wait for the proposal to come in, and we go from there," but we still have Matt Man, so you're gonna finance it. But in the first five years, I'd still like you and the park board to say, "What are you gonna do to the existing Parks and Recreation stuff? You have soccer field, veterans and all that. Is it, to build this dream, is it gonna kill rest of the park system?" And so, I'd like an answer from you and the park board on that. What, stage three years or five-year plan, what's gonna happen to the rest of the facility?
You know, that, you, you see what we need every, every year on the capital improvement list. So, um, we, we will, will continue to address those needs. Um, as, as things wear out like they do, we'll, we'll repair them. You know, when, when it, when it breaks, we fix it. And that's how the city operates. So, um, and I, and I would just, just to remind everyone, the, the three things that were at the top of those surveys and the top of the, the needs list were, one, a community center, two, a baseball complex, three, an outdoor pool, followed by an indoor pool. Um, yes, there were some things on there, like racquetball courts. That, that was kinda high up on the list at one time, but.
You know, they took us a while to get here, so it's not popular anymore.
Yeah, so, yeah, you, you, you listen to the consultants, you find out what, what trends are popular, what, uh, what this community is lacking. And, and that's how the building came together. Um, but if, I'd like to have a lot more in the building, to be honest. Um, I'd like to have a bigger track. I'd like to have another basketball court. But you have to be realistic, and you have to try to keep it within budget.
All right. Thank you, Clay. If, if it's all right, we'll move on. Is that cool with everybody's? Okay. New business, City Holiday Lighting.
Yeah. You step in the hall and bring the wreath in. Um, we're talking about the downtown and Business Fifty-four holiday decorations. We, the City of Fulton, no, the community acquired those, um, between twenty-five and thirty years ago. The city bought them used, so we really don't know how, how old they are. Over the past probably four or five years, the electric department has sorted out and kept using the better ones. Um, we are down, ba- based on input from the electric guys that, that do the hanging with some assistance from other departments each year. In December of two thousand and seventeen, we made an assumption that the Christmas decorations were the Chambers. Um, I'm, I'm, even as of today, I don't know if that's a correct assumption. I don't know who owns them. Right?
They just store them.
And I, and the city stores them, puts them up and takes them down. The city did not purchase them. I have learned in the last few days that they were purchased by the Chamber. It, this is what I've been told. I, I believe it to be true. I have been, that they were purchased by the Chamber by some large individual donations. The, the Chamber was a pass-through. The Chamber did not buy them. They were the pass-through organizations for the community to acquire them. Well, we gave the Chamber a letter in December of two thousand and seventeen, indicating to them that Christmas of two thousand and eighteen would be the last season, Christmas season, that we would put them up. Um, we looked, we actually had a delegation go to Kirkwood. Kirkwood, I, I put out a blast to all the city managers and states, said, "Does anybody get rid of any Christmas decorations?" Heard from Kirkwood, we sent a group down there to look at them. They were just huge. They were big. They were unusable for the City of Fulton. Um, and then it came around that, um, that they're, they're not the Chambers. The Chamber really wasn't interested in pursuing the acquisition of additional, um, Christmas decorations. So, I just kinda wanna tell you that, right now, and, and if you want me to go, um, I had one of the electric guys go over this one and kinda show me some of the problems with it. Kinda what the guys, the ladies, the, the wiring's thirty years old. Okay? It's cracked. The electric department guys are nervous that if one of those bare wires gets up, because it, the, the frame is steel, if one of those bare wires gets up against the, the pole that it's attached to, it could cause someone to have a really bad Christmas. Okay? It could cause someone to be electrocuted.
But these are the ones that went up, like, on North Business Fifty-four, right?
Yes.
But don't the light poles on North Business Fifty-four do not have electrical connections?
They do not. So, these are the ones that are also gonna be up on Court Street. They're also on, on Court Street and the Brick District and kinda through this area. Okay?
Yeah.
So, like, North Business Fifty-four and South Fifty-four, they, they won't have decorations anymore. Okay? But, but these are for the downtown Court Street, Nichols, Nichols.
Do we know how many poles built or on?
I think, didn't they count? It was like thirty-five, forty?
Main Court Street?
About thirty-five to forty.
Forty.
Um, there is a possibility, possibility, that if we ask the electric guys to go through them and can, to see if there's, can they find twenty-five, that they're willing to put up one, one last year and make a plea to the community of, "Do you want Christmas decorations downtown, downtown or not?" We might be able to find twenty-five out of the group that they're comfortable in putting up. But, you know, to buy, to buy new Christmas decorations such as that, I'm gonna guess that wreath that sits right there is somewhere between four and five hundred dollars. Okay? And we are possibly, possibly late enough in two thousand and nineteen that if, even, even if somebody said, "I'll write you a check for fifty thousand dollars," we might not be able to get it for Christmas two thousand and nineteen.
Guess what, Bill?
Come on.
Just so happens, I made three very specific contacts at the Recon Expo for downtown decorations. And I've got three contacts that do this sort of stuff for downtowns, specific to smaller downtowns. And I've got a lot of good information on that to purchase new. And even, they've got contacts for people that have purchased from them recently that might be looking to also upgrade so we could buy used from them. I was gonna bring that to the council as one of the concerns here in a couple of months. There's a lot of new technology out there when it comes to the Christmas decorations. There's a lot of lightweight LED stuff. And one of the things that I brought up to them was, you know, a lot of the early LED decorations, when you get it, the LEDs were so bright that all you saw was just a glob. You know, if that was lit up right now with the five-year-old LEDs that they used to have for that size of a thing, it was just a glob of light. You couldn't even tell it was a wreath. They've, they've modernized that, they've toned some of that down, they can put color. There's examples where they could string lights from across Court Street, you know, to create kind of a downtown walkway whenever we, we have those downtown events. There's lots and lots of stuff out there. And, yeah, you can spend two hundred and fifty dollars on an item, you can spend twelve hundred and fifty dollars on an item. Depends what you want it to do.
I sent, um, Mike West, Mike West is very involved with the Boysc- with the Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts. That's why I sent him a text today saying, "Does anybody need an Eagle Scout project?" I mean, 'cause, 'cause what we got there, folks, is, we got good bones.
Sure.
We got great bones. And the, uh, purchasing department, they bought, you know, we, we put that wire on to, on top of the buildings. It's the same stuff, just, I think that's eighteen-inch spacings, and we could buy the same, same stuff with six or twelve-inch spacing, buy new, but, I mean, that's just incredibly labor-intensive. It would take, six to eight hours probably to recreate that. Is there a Boy Scout, is there an Eagle Scout that's looking for a project, for a troop to, one guy with a set of snips and to strip them down to nothing, and another guy with some adult supervision willing to, are able to put some lights back on and new garland and that kinda stuff. So, I mean, we're, we're looking at options. And I just, um, it's, it's June, and I'm, it's been brought to my attention by certain individuals that, you know, those lights have been up in downtown Fulton since before they were born.
Yep. People come here, our little town, because we do put up a lot of Christmas decorations.
You know, maybe, you know, maybe we can ask them to look and find twenty-five to just do Court Street, or twenty, to do Court Street, that they're willing to sort them out and check them out over there.
I would hate to not see Christmas lights.
Are you?
Oh, you, every, everybody would hate to not have Christmas lights.
This picture from the seventies is what I showed the people of what this town used to look like.
Okay. And, and that's a great picture, and I've seen that picture before. Um, another, another thing, as far as the banners across the street that go across the street.
That's what I grew up to.
We, we might be getting out of that business too, folks. 'Cause those stringers that go from. 'Cause those stringers that go from across the street, from building to building, those buildings are now much older than they were twenty-five years ago. And we've had buildings, bricks just fall out of buildings on their own downtown. And it's been brought to our attention that under the right weather constitutions or a little wind, I'd, I'd, I'd hate to be responsible for pulling down four hundred bricks from the side of a building or, or having it land on somebody or something.
Well, heck, I remember one Sunday morning where Regency's down, the whole building fell down in the middle of Court Street.
So, as far as the stringers across the street, I mean, if we keep putting those up, we're gonna get some serious waivers of release from the people who own the buildings we're attaching to. Anyway, I wanted to bring that to your attention.
And I think there's been some feelers put out to, to maybe get a committee put together. We'll do the best we can with this year.
I'm not, if you're gonna do.
No, I said I'd drop Mr. Stone's.
I would love to be on that.
He liked volunteers, didn't he?
I would love to be on that committee. I've got lots of ideas for Christmas lights in this community.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely like seeing the Christmas lights in town. I think it brings a nice charm to our town. I do not like the liability of having, you know, old electrical wiring on our light poles and things, so. We need to do something.
Neither do I. All right, you guys have been made aware. You guys know if you've got any great ideas, talk to me later. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to council concerns. I'll start to my right. Uh, Councilman Shiverdiger?
I have nothing tonight.
Councilman Moore?
I really don't have one concern, but I would like to point out that, did, uh, uh, I mean, did Kyle get to read this card? I'm not picking out any department, 'cause I'm sure you had a lot of help, but this was a, some of our handicapped citizens said, uh, well, made us aware of us, something on the bridge crossing by Wim Woods. And to your department, we got a very nice note back thanking you so much for getting it done quick and that now they both can go across, up the sidewalk and get across the bridge, so thank you very much for that.
Yeah, Kyle, I, I read that. Thank you as well. They're giving Steve the credit. They gave Steve the credit for getting on there.
But, no, I gave him and his department the credit back because, and I have talked since. I appreciate that, 'cause she was really excited that you really made them to get across there quick.
Little things like that make the difference sometimes. It's awesome. Councilwoman Paesner?
Um, the only thing I have is when we were at the MML training, uh, one of the things that Myrma brought up was, um, older, um, sidewalk conditions and culverts and liability issues of somebody possibly, you know, falling over a section. Um, and so, I don't know if we have any areas in town that need to be addressed that might need additional railing or fencing put up, um, to prevent somebody from accidentally falling over and ensuing the city. So, just like to take a look at, uh, just the, around and see if there's anything that needs to be addressed ahead of time.
Now, I think we can base already to a point. We have some monies allocated for that annually, is that right, for sidewalk improvements?
Yes, we've, we've recently, um, designated a sidewalk project on a yearly basis, and we also have a, uh, a material labor fifty-fifty kinda sidewalk program that we have. But, uh, as far as a full of, uh, every sidewalk, every culvert and everything like that, we do have somewhat of an inventory, but, uh, uh, you know, we're always looking to improve that. And, uh, rating, rating those certain areas is important, because we only have a certain amount of funds to address, and there's, there's plenty of issues out there. Uh, we'll, we'll, uh, continue to look for, uh, ways to improve our process.
Thank you, Kyle. Anything else? Move on to, uh, Councilman Braun?
I'll just go back. A, a serious thing that we have to do more for City Hall security. And, and I know we've done some surveys and we've talked about some things, but it's one of those things that I think need to continue to move forward with trying to come to some resolution on what is right or wrong for us.
And we, do we have some process in place for doing some training? I, I know Chief Conflict Resolution was one of the things that was talked about, I believe, that it'd be cost-effective.
Steve, and I, and Officer Laggett can help us out, but I was trained to be a trainer in, the, the old term is verbal judo. Talking to do escalate a situation. And I told Bill that he would not have to come to the podium tonight, so thank you for
He's volunteering.
Making me going back on my way. Yeah, he volunteered, I didn't call him up.
I didn't hear you call him at all.
That's right.
We, we do have officers that are trained in conflict resolution. The verbal judo is what it used to be called, also active shooter training that we can, uh, provide for the city. So we are prepared to offer whatever, uh, presentations and training that you would like to have.
How long are those classes?
They can be short. I mean, e- even an hour or less, just to, just to give the basics and, you know, maybe run people through in shifts. But we can, we can get it done.
Kinda talk to some of the guys and talk to us a little bit, and let's try and get something done in the next couple of months.
Okay. I will make sure Chief knows.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, I don't. Oh, yes, one thank you. Thank you for removing the flashing signs.
Yeah! Like Kyle did.
But I hope you guys don't miss them.
Are getting the light removed on Rado, is that right?
Thursday, I believe.
This week.
Like today, maybe?
Yeah. So that's, that's kinda nice.
Thursday.
That'd be very welcome for people to drive, drive through there, I think.
Someone, someone needs to invite Mike West to the, the, the taking down ceremony.
Yeah, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We need a photo op there, don't we?
He was very much vocal about that light at that location.
Yep, I forgot that. So, moving on, Councilman Stone?
Yes, after our conversation at one of the last meetings about the, the ashbor and all of that, I did reach out to some of the Boy Scouts and Scouts and Cub Scouts, because there are various merit badges in forestry and ecology and Eagle Scout projects, and I've gotten a couple of feelers back. We may be able to get our inventory of, of trees. We may be able to get some treatment opportunities and some different things from, from that project.
Excellent.
So, that, that's, you know, again, we don't, as a city, we don't always have to take the, the full brunt or cost of something. We just need to partner with our community partners.
Just like the stream team.
Yep.
Yep, fantastic. Thank you.
So I'll keep you up to date as we, as that moves forward. And that's all I have.
All right, Councilman, uh, Simmons?
Uh, I don't have anything.
And Councilwoman Sebacher?
I have nothing.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Is there, have I missed an email or is there any plans yet about a float to the council? Are we all riding in the parade or?
There, there is a float that's gonna be in the parade.
And we, and we need, we, we talked about that a little bit, um, yesterday with some folks. We need to get some detailed plans together as far as, you know, encouraging the employees to participate and show up and coming up with a float design and, um, getting, uh, twenty-five hundred ice pops ordered. Kathy? And fro- and, and frozen this year. And frozen this year. We buy and frozen. So, yeah, we need to, we need to spend a, an hour or two just really doing, going over some of the logistics of who, what, when, and, and, thank you.
Good thinking.
And specific to that, it does take twenty-five people to carry the flag. And I know that was gonna fall on council members as well as city employees. So if anybody has an interest specifically in walking in the parade and helping to carry the large flag.
And just so everybody hears once again, um, it's not only for city employees, but it's for their families. Spouses of city employees have spouses that oftentimes go out in the middle of the night and go away from their families, go away from their families over the weekend or for twenty-four-hour shifts. So we wanna open it up to the families as well. Be fun to have just a bunch of little kids too walking with us and.
One more question. This one's about what Mr. Stone brought up, what he learned new about relatives on boards appointed. How, and, and you know, I'm the one who complains that our charter says only it benefits you financially, that you don't have, then you don't go. But, so, how far, what are they going in a relative in this?
It, it's called a, a fourth degree relation, and that's through marriage or blood. So it gets to be like that second cousin twice removed sort of thing. So it, I mean, the, the presenter was very adamant about know who your relatives are, know who your spouse's relatives are, know who's being appointed, and do your research before you vote on that appointment. And it does not have to be a financial gain. It's, you are, it, it's that relationship. It's nepotism, that if, if you're, and it, it is a automatic forfeiture. Not just forfeiture, but they, they remove you from, from your council seat if you're found to have done that, so.
The person you appointed gets to keep their appointment.
Yeah, the person you appointed keeps their job. You lose your council seat.
And that's all on the MML website as well, the charts and graphs.
Yes, we're a small community, so that's relevant and good catch, guys.
And that's, that's why I wanted to make sure to, to.
So we'll move, move on to resolutions?
Yes.
We've got a second reading, Bill number fifteen forty. If Councilman Braun, if you would present that, please.
Bill number fifteen forty, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri to sign all necessary documents in relationship to an application for federal and state assistance for the Elton Hensley Memorial Airport to assist with new hangars and approving the city's local match not to exceed ten percent of the projected cost. I make a motion to place Bill fifteen forty for third reading at the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Is there discussion on this? We had something in our packet?
I just, I just, I, I will be happy to, to read. Everybody should have it in front of them, Fulton Airport facts. We have thirty-nine hangars leased out, of which only four are City of Fulton residents or have businesses in the city limits. There's thirty-five overall that are from all over the state. Thirty hangars rented for a hundred and fifty-six dollars a month. The rest of them are higher or other special arrangements. If we would increase just twenty-five dollars per hangar, it would increase revenue by nine thousand dollars a year at the airport. If the lease amount is increased and someone decides to move to another airport, it would free up space for the waiting list. Out of the twelve, um, oh, excuse me, the airport over the last twenty-five years has lost, don't know whether "lost" is the right word, but one point six million dollars, an average of sixty-four thousand dollars a year that the airport's spending in a negative. Out of the twelve airports that are within fifty miles, we are the lowest-priced fuel per gallon at three dollars and sixty-four cents. The average for the twelve is four dollars and thirty-one cents. We are below by sixty, almost sixty-seven cents, less than the average of the twelve airports that are local. If we just came up to the, what the average is in fuel, we sell about ten thousand gallons of fuel a year, we'd add another sixty-six hundred and fifty-eight dollars in revenue. The capital projects are what send the airport into the negative over the last twenty-five years. The other couple of things that I did is I wondered in myself, what was storage sheds in town? A twenty-by-thirty storage shed rents for two hundred and fifty dollars. That's not, that's a storage shed. A ten-by-forty is a hundred and twenty, and these are three different locations and different sizes. That's why I couldn't find all the same sizes at the same place. And the third one is ten-by-twenty at seventy dollars. Square footage-wise, those dollars don't come close to what the airport is charging. And are we, as the council, making the best choices for the City of Fulton when it comes to the airport? By spending extra dollars, when every year, for roughly the last twenty-five years, is sixty-four thousand dollars averaging in the hole.
Is there any more discussion on this? Do we have questions at all?
I, yeah, probably. The purpose of the capital improvement project is because we have all of this federal grant money in a bucket that we would end up losing if we don't spend it, correct?
Partially.
Yes, Valer, um, we are appropriated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, um, from the federal, from FAA, for airport projects. And, uh, we do not, uh, obligate funds within a three-year period. We will lose them. But I would like to, I would like to address the Fulton Airport facts. Because as I look at the numbers, Councilman Braun's reporting the airport as, as a, as a loser. And I, I just plain simply don't see it that way. When we're talking about capital projects, how do we fund those capital projects? We fund the capital projects through the appropriated money, ninety percent. And as of, from about two thousand thirteen, fourteen range, it was actually at a ninety-five percent clip. So that means the city was actually funding those projects at a five or ten percent clip. Now, you know, I'm not Kathy and I can't explain the numbers as well as she can, but when we're taking, when, when we're accounting for an asset at a hundred percent, but we're only paying ninety or ninety-five percent, that's a little misleading.
I, I guess I don't, I guess, as well as what you have here and just looking at operating expense, to say that the airport would recover, there's more to the airport than just the operating expense every year. And, and Kathy, am I wrong?
The.
I, I'm not sure I understood the question. Can you say that question again?
Okay, if we just look at what, between hangars and rent and fuel sales, what goes out and what comes in, that's not the only thing that goes into the airport, otherwise we would be in decent shape year after year after year with the airport. Am I, is that a true statement?
On a year that the airport has no capital expenditures, uh, the airport is sixty to seventy thousand dollars in the black. The capital expenditure is just due to the fact that the capital expenditure at the airport, being that, being that is a airport beast, is just very expensive. I think the last airport, the runway we history did was two million dollars.
Yep.
So even at, so two, two million dollars to get a new runway, so that, you know, the two, the, the ten percent local match on that port was two hundred thousand, which, that's real money, again, for. which, that's real money, again, for us. That's, I think, does that answer your question?
Yes.
I'd, I'd further that with, over the past 15 years, we've done two major runway projects, two major capital projects.
Without a doubt, it's still a negative number in my mind, Kyle.
And, but, but to further what I'm discussing here is that in those last 15 years, we are in the black, including those capital projects. And, and I would, I would encourage the opportunity to look at those numbers in more detail.
I am looking at it right here, and I'm seeing in 2017, a negative 12,473, and the adopted in 2018 was 113,492, right on the budget, right here in the budget. Unless I'm looking at that completely wrong, which.
I, I think there's an opportunity here to gain some knowledge and looking, looking at those numbers, maybe even for myself. And I would, as, as, you know, even today, I was in Kathy's office looking at claim on cash that the airport has. And, you know, she went as back as far as she could in, in our current billing system, which was, what, 15 years ago or so? And, you know, our claim on cash 15 years ago was more than our claim on cash. We're actually in a better situation today. Now, it fluctuates from year to year, but that demonstrates, that demonstrates, that demonstrates that over the last 15 years with, with the capital improvement projects that we've had, it's not a loser. And I would say that if you want the airport to be less of an asset, then don't build hangars. Because hangars actually account for most of the money that we make at the airport. So if, if you want the airport to be less of an asset, I would.
If it's about the free money, Kyle, that's a different story, and I hear you. But unless, unless somebody else can tell me that the numbers that I received are incorrect, then I have my opinion, and I'm allowed to have that, and it makes perfectly good sense that four people in the City of Fulton either have a business or live in the city limits, and we're taking care of the rest of the state with our airport. I don't see it as, as a win for the City of Fulton.
I think that, I would also say, and, and indeed, you're entitled to your opinion, and like I said, I think there's a learning chance for both, both of us and everybody on it, and, but, and many of the facts that you listed, this is the first time I had a chance to look at it. But many of the items you list here, I think we should look at, you know, I think they're great ideas, I mean, I really do. You know, I think there are, there are items that we've discussed looking at, and, and all your facts do is validate that, and I, I think it's, I think it's good work here. But I, I would say that to claim the airport as a loss, in, in my opinion, is, is a misnomer. You know, we did have an airport advisory board meeting today, and, you know, I thought, the reason why, you know, we're looking at hangars to begin with, guys, is because of the condition that the airport is, is in presently. It's in pretty dang good condition. But for me to say that is one thing, I do have a guest here, and David Hollabon's here. He's a leading member of the Kingdom Pilots Association, he also has attended multiple airport advisory board meetings as a pilot that's in the air, and, and I, and I've got him, and I would like to invite him to just give you guys an idea from a pilot's, from the pilot's perspective of what, what the present condition of the airport is and why we're thinking, you know, hangars is a good idea at this moment, because it does generate revenue at the airport.
Absolutely, bring it up.
Again, Mr. David Hollabon.
Thanks, Kyle. To be respectful of your time, I prepared a written statement, and it took me about two and a half minutes to get through it, and I'd appreciate it if you'd let me get through it before you ask any questions. As Kyle said, my name is Dave Hollabon, I'm a professional engineer, I'm a private pilot, I'm the treasurer of the Kingdom Pilots Association, I'm an alternate member to the airport advisory board, and I'm a renter of hangar number 19 at the airport. And in the interest of full disclosure, I should probably say I worked with Ballard at the nuclear plant, and Mr. Stone's wife babysat my kids when she was a teenager back in the day. That's my relationship to the council. I am in support of Bill 1540 for a capital project to build additional hangars at the airport. I learned a long time ago, it's not a wise financial decision to leave money on the table. During my career, it was difficult to come up with the funds to max out my 401K, but I always found the money to obtain the company match. We've got a similar situation here at the airport, only it's much more attractive economically. A councilman stated at the last city council meeting that he did not believe that this is money well spent. For a city contribution of approximately $69,000, you'll obtain an immediate 1,000% return on investment with the grant funding, with the project then becoming cash flow positive after five to seven years, depending on the number of hangars that are built. That's a 14 to 21% annual return on investment, which I think any one of us would take. Put another way, the city can increase its net worth by $762,000 by spending $69,000. That's also a deal I wish I had. I think this is excellent use of the taxpayers' money, and in fact, I think it would be negligent if the city does not take advantage of this grant funding. There are many other projects that could be performed at the airport, I'll name a few. Paving the grass islands at the existing hangars would facilitate snow removal for your crews. Installing gutters on the existing hangars would eliminate waterfalls when it rains and icicles when it freezes, a safety item. Adding Wi-Fi to the existing hangars would allow pilots to remotely control their block heaters. Right now, the pilots just tend to leave their block heaters on all the time during the winter, so electricity is burning all the time. Could save electricity that way. The lighting is pretty old lighting in the hangars, there's a lot more efficient lighting that are available now, such as you're talking about here with your Christmas decorations. Purchasing or obtaining an easement on the land south of runway 1836 and removing the trees would increase safety factor for existing traffic, would also allow for lengthening that runway in the future for larger aircraft. Resurfacing the parking lot in front of the terminal building. So there's a lot of different things could be done out there. All those projects are worthwhile, none of them would provide the return on investment that you see from the hangar project. The current hangar waiting list exceeds the number of hangars to be built. I think those hangars would be filled, that's based on a list that Kyle and his folks maintain. Given the overall excellent condition of the airport infrastructure, the airport needs to be in good condition for, to get these grants. The airport is in good condition with the exception of the realites, and this would be an ideal time to pursue the project. General aviation supports training, it supports business and personal, personal travel, it supports recreation, environmental surveys, firefighting, agricultural spraying, law enforcement, military, and other purposes, okay? Nearby airports in Columbia, Jefferson City, Booneville, Mexico, and elsewhere have recently taken advantage of the type of grant funding that we're talking about. If the City of Fulton does not use these allocated funds, the money will be forfeited and it'll be given to other Missouri airports. Progressive communities recognize the value and support general aviation, and I encourage the city council to approve the project. And I'd also like, just to briefly address Mr. Braun's concerns, and I haven't had the benefit to look at the information he's got, but my understanding, the financial folks could probably explain it a lot better, I believe the reason that the airport appears to be in the hole is because we're depreciating assets at 100%, which we only paid 5 or 10 cents on the dollar to get. And if you depreciated them at 5 or 10 cents on the dollar, I don't believe your numbers would show us into red rather than the black.
Depreciation is the factor, I will say that, but you, you also have to, that's part of a profit and loss statement.
Yes, revenue and expenses at the airport on an annual basis are, I think, as Bill said, are 60, 70, $80,000 a year. One year of revenue over expenses would pay for the $69,000 that the city's been asked to donate. Secondly, in regards to hangar rental rates, Kyle and his folks performed a survey within the last month, I think you received a copy of it, and of all the local airports in the vicinity, the only one with higher rental rates on average, I mean, there's particulars based on size and so forth, was like the Ozarks at Kaiser, and otherwise Fulton was, was right up there with their rental rates. And thirdly, and Bill can attest to this because we had an airport advisory board meeting today at the airport, okay? And pilots are stopping in for fuel, we asked them, "Why do you stop at Fulton for fuel?" "Because you've got economical fuel, okay?" We are known for having economical fuel. And, and so I like to think that what we don't make up in our per gallon price, we make up in volume. People, every time I see a new, you know, an airplane out at the airport, I'll recognize, "Why'd you stop here? You got a tracking fuel process." So that's, that's the extent of what I had to say, I don't know if you've got any questions for me?
Do you feel like, do you feel like 10,000 gallons a year is a lot of fuel to go through the airport? I don't know what a plane takes, okay? By no means do I know what a plane takes.
Mr. Braun, I can't answer your question. I burn six and a half gallons an hour, I fly 50 or 60 hours a year. So 300, 400 gallons, that's for me.
Because I, I look at it this way, and, and, and believe me, I've thought about a lot of this. If I have a Ford pickup truck and it burns 20 gallons a week, I burn 1,000 gallons of fuel in one pickup truck a year, at 20 gallons a week. It doesn't seem like 10,000 gallons is a lot of fuel to me to be going through. I don't know what an airplane holds.
40 gallons, in my case.
40 is it? Really? Scary. These are little airplanes.
You mentioned it, David, thank you very much, on the depreciation expense. When we do look at the enterprise fund for the airport, it does take into account, the 2018 budget took into account $160,000 with the depreciation on that fund. But we're only comparing that depreciation expense as well as the other expenses to the flat revenues from there. You know, if we were to then add the assets onto that side of it, I mean, unfortunately, adding the depreciation expense under that fund at that time does show $113,000 loss to that, when actually it's a $46,000 gain. When you look at the revenues, true revenues over true expenses, we projected to make $46,000 at the airport. It's only through the accounting purposes that we had to add the depreciation expense in there, and that's when we showed the $113,000 loss.
And where do those depreciations come from, capital improvements?
It comes from the assets, but the assets aren't on here to show that balance.
Again, if you look at the claim on cash, we, we are not increasing in the negative. You know, from 15 years ago to now, we're not, we've actually made up ground about to the tune of, of how much we're in the black over the, over those years, so.
So the number I, that I, so you're saying the number that I received from Bill, which received it from Kathy, is not correct, is, is that what I'm hearing you say?
I'm telling you, I think it's a very good opportunity for us all to sit down and look at it. Because, guess where I got my numbers?
I didn't get them from anywhere other than.
I think it's in how the numbers.
It's not a pie in the sky number that I just dreamed up, Kyle.
And, and neither, and neither is mine, I'm not, we're not having an argument over, I think it's, I think it's an educational opportunity for, for us both. I know I was in Kathy's office trying to get educated on this topic as late as five, past 5 o'clock today, so, you know, I would encourage, I would encourage you and myself and, and anybody who wants to join to, to have a good conversation on it, because, because I can tell you, I went through line by line to get my numbers, and I also went to, went to the source and the person who knows a lot better than I do on them, so that's what I would say.
She knows a lot better than I do too, and, and that's all I'm saying is. I didn't, I didn't dream one number up off this, what I put out here, not one number is dreamed up on my part as pie in the sky.
And, and, and I didn't claim it to be either, I, I'm just, I'm just giving you how I see the numbers, and, and when you're looking at depreciation, I, I think that you have to also account for the fact that, as, as David mentioned, you know, when we have a capital improvement project, we're not funding that at a 100% clip, we're doing that at a 5 or 10% clip. And, and that, that's, you know.
Kathy, you would, do you have, do you want to come up and defend yourself or?
You've got three minutes.
I won't take three minutes. I think what we have here is a total misunderstanding of terminology. I think there is confusion about what a negative claim on cash means. I think there's confusion about what an asset is, since we record the full value of the asset. MoDOT's portion, our portion, we are required to depreciate that entire value. Everything has a lifespan. If we, if we depreciated on only our 5 or 10%, it would take thousands of years to depreciate that amount. So I think there's just some confusion on how it all works.
But in our budget, going back to the depreciation side.
But a budget is totally different than a financial statement, just.
It is, oh, it is, it is.
So we're on the same page there.
How we're coming up with some of Jeff's numbers and some of John's numbers.
Depreciation is a non-cash expense.
We, in the expense, in the expense columns, we are required to show depreciation as the cost, all right? Only in the enterprise funds. So it is taken into consideration, and it shows up in the, as, as a total expenditure. It shows up in that line. Then if you go over in the budget a couple lines into the total adjustments, because depreci, she's not going to like when I say some of this stuff, but depreciation to us does not mean anything.
Because it is a non-cash expense.
We don't, huh?
It's a non-cash expense.
We, and we don't do taxes, and we don't deduct depreciation, we're not, so to get to our cash position, to get to where, to a number that makes sense to me, it's pretty much the same, the same way we've done the budget for the past 23 years, we actually add the depreciation back in as an adjustment to show how we did from a cash standpoint last year. And based on the wonderful budget sheets that Mr. Stone put in front of me, the summary for the 2018, we budgeted an increase of positive $29,000, okay? And that, that number fluctuates from 29 to 60 to 7, has a positive cash flow. So we tell them where the $1.6 million comes from, please.
The $1.6 million is the airport's claim on cash, and as Kyle mentioned, he had me look it up today, it's a negative 1.6.
What's claim on cash?
We have a consolidated cash account. So every operating fund either has a positive cash balance or a negative cash balance. So if we didn't have all those funds with positive cash balances, it would be difficult for some of our less fortunate funds to continue in operation.
Airport, golf course.
Yes, those are our two biggies.
No, that's not the general fund, that's not the.
But we have commonly referred to as a pooled cash account. So, you know, you have to keep track of every funds.
So the 1 points, you're not going to like this, but the airport's 1.6 in the hole, as, as cash is concerned.
Only regarding cash.
Only regarding, as a cash position, it does not take in the value of their assets, which we can't sell anyway, so does it really have, you know, what's the value of something you can't sell? But from a cash posi, from a cash position, the airport is like 1.6 in the hole, so.
But the airport's assets are probably, yeah.
Putting aside all of the financial, the accounting terms.
I'm twitching.
It all boils down to, we have an opportunity to. Well, it all boils down to, we have an opportunity to spend seventy thousand dollars to gain a seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar asset for the city. Correct?
That will bring in revenue every year.
And pay itself off in ten years.
Well, I understand that. I've been wanting to say that for a long time and we kept talking about cash flow.
Yes.
Do that.
And that's the basic part of this, is with the grants, we have a chance to come up with a very large asset to the city for a minimal expenditure.
Which will, which will produce a return on investment. And it's pretty well the only thing you can do at the airport that will give you a return on investment and make the airport look, look even better in the black, in my opinion, at this point.
So I think it's fair to say, you can be negative about the airport, but still sort of be positive about this particular project. Is that sort of thing to say?
Exactly. I think the more financially, you know, the better off the airport is financially, the better the city is in general. Because, you know, the more, the more in black that we can become, the more money you might have for other projects.
So Dave, you fly to other cities? You talk to other pilots who don't hangar their aircraft here? Is there some sort of concern? Or really they don't care? Or gee, this is, you know, Fulton's a great place to go?
My, my evidence is really anecdotal. If I happen to be out at the airport and somebody stops in and I'll stop and visit with them in the fuel pump or in the terminal building or whatever, but I'll ask them, you know, where are you coming from? Where are you going? Why did you stop here? Okay? And it's usually, they're cross-country trips for people. The, well, the day of the pancake breakfast, there were some guys flying basically from east coast to west coast and stopped here because of the storm that was here on that day, okay? Yesterday evening, I was flying. A guy took off right after I landed and I asked somebody else, where's he going? Texas. So there's, you know, there's a lot of people that do stop by. During Oshkosh Air Venture up in Wisconsin, every summer, we get a lot of people stopping by. And most often, the answer is because we have attractive fuel prices and because we've got three runways, which is very attractive. If it's windy and the winds are not favoring the main runway, one eight three six, then we've got six two four. And for people that fly tail draggers and, you know, airplanes with big tundra tires and that type of thing, they really like to land on the grass. So the turf runway is very attractive to people for landing here. So I mean, that's, you know, my anecdotal evidence for, for people stopping in here.
And isn't the grass runway kind of critical for pilots in training?
It is, as a matter of fact. So for your private pilot's license, you've got to demonstrate what is called a soft field takeoff and a soft field landing. And basically what we're talking about is turf, okay? Most pilots, most airports, they have to simulate that on paved runways because they don't have access to a turf runway. You know, we'll let people come up here from Jefferson City or come over here from Columbia just to be able to use our turf runway. So that really is sort of an attractive little, little feature that we've got out here. And I might throw in the guys that landed during the storm on the day of the pancake breakfast. Because we had no courtesy car, I just gave them the keys to my car to drive in the back to get something to eat. That's a subject for, a subject for another day.
So today's topic, the information we have, has that changed at all? Do we have any feedback from the state about the grant money that might be available?
Thank you, David.
What, what I've done is tried to simplify the matter, you know, before we proposed a project that potentially had twelve hangars. You know, we've scaled that, we've, you know, what I have in the packet scales this project to the money that we do have, that we know that we're getting. No, no ifs, no buts, you know, it's what we're getting. The project's scaled to that. It's, it's going to use the money that, that is a portion to us. So that money we're getting.
And he is addressing the runway, runway light safety issue. He's got forty thousand planned for, to improve the reels. We did get an update on that today at the airport meeting. But it sounds like we still, we need to do some, we need to spend some money out there and get those in first rate condition. So, so based on the fact that he's got forty thousand dollars set aside for the reels and he has scaled it back to, depending on, depending on the bids, it would be three, four, five box hangars rather than a bank of twelve T-hangers. Probably need to go ahead with it. It is not going to require us to take any additional loans. It's not going to require us to take out any additional debt and/or have to bargain for or keep our fingers crossed that we get additional grants.
But if we do get that additional, it could come back to us.
It would have to come back to you for approval for any more match of any... Right now, we're just looking at...
Would that grant, would there be a ten percent associated with that other grant?
I believe the answer's yes, but I'm not seeing it. Either talking about a potential grant?
Yeah. Because somebody else's...
Right, right.
Okay.
All right, so you have a motion and a second on the floor to move this to third reading at the next meeting?
What was it?
The original word.
Come down there. No, I'm kidding. If you've got more to discuss, let's talk about it.
What were you both doing? I forgot.
So if there's no more discussion, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
No?
No.
We have six yeses and one no. That Bill fifteen forty passes on for third reading. Okay, Councilwoman Sebacher, if you would read Bill number fifteen forty-three?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collection of taxes with the contract period commencing upon approval through June two thousand and twenty-three. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen forty-three for third reading at this council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this? If not, we'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Okay, Bill number fifteen forty-three passed to third reading. If you would, Councilwoman Sebacher?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen forty-three, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with the collector and county commissioners of Callaway County, Missouri, relating to the collection of taxes with the contract period commencing upon approval through June two thousand and twenty-three. I make a motion to place Bill number fifteen forty-three for final passage at this council meeting.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say yes? No? That bill pass... Answer to the roll call, yes or no?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Sorry, Ms. Sebacher? Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
And Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Bill number fifteen forty-three passes, thank you. Moving on, Bill number fifteen forty-four, if you would, Councilman Simmons?
Yes, sir. Bill number fifteen forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot six for South Wind estate subdivision. I make a motion that we approve the second reading for Bill number fifteen forty-four.
Third reading?
Well, we've got to approve the second reading first.
We actually just needed it, yeah.
And then we will, and then...
That's not how that works.
That we approve the third reading at tonight's meeting.
We just need to place it for third reading at the meeting.
Whatever.
There you go.
Let's approve it.
Perfect.
Okay.
Second. Great.
We knew what you meant.
We knew what you meant.
I knew by then.
So we have a motion and a second on the floor? Is that right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is there any discussion on this? If not, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? And if you would, read that again for third.
Bill number fifteen forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot six for South Wind estate subdivision. I make a motion that we approve third reading and final reading at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? That bill moves on. You've all heard it for three times. If you would, please answer the roll call, yes or no?
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
And Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Okay.
So that one passes, correct?
Bill fifteen forty-four passed. Okay, and I did not come up with a replacement for Mrs. Reclu or present this?
I can do it for you.
Okay, y'all are fighting over it. Mr. Stone helped me last time, so Mr. Moore, if you would, please.
All right. Bill number fifteen forty-five, an order authorizing the use of private golf carts from Tanglewood Golf Course for the residents of Tanglewood Business Park and Tanglewood Subdivision, establish an effective date. I move this for third reading at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion on this? If not, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? Yes, as have, if you would, read it again, please.
Bill number fifteen forty-five, an ordinance authorizing the use of private golf carts at Tanglewood Golf Course for the residents of Tanglewood Business Park and Tanglewood Subdivision, establish an effective date. I move this to final passage at tonight's meeting by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard the bill read three times, fifteen forty-five. If you would, please answer, yes or no?
Okay, Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
And Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative, one absent.
Bill number fifteen forty-five passed. Moving on, Mr. Moore again, if you would, Bill number fifteen forty-six.
If there is no objections, I will move this on to the third this evening.
Absolutely.
Bill number fifteen forty-six, an order authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot two of the Willa Creek subdivision. Move this for third reading by title only at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? If you would, read it again, please.
Bill number fifteen forty-six, an order authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to approve plot two of the Willa Creek subdivision. Move this for final passage by title only at tonight's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? You've heard the Bill fifteen forty-six read three times? Please answer, yes or no?
Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Seven affirmative, one absent.
Bill number fifteen forty-six has passed. So we're down to announcements. The next meeting of the city council will be held Tuesday, June twenty-fifth, at six thirty. Other than that, we do actually have a need for executive session tonight.
Make a motion, we enter executive session?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
Actually, really quickly, so sorry, we got to do a roll call vote. And then if Mayor Cannon, can you just state the reason we have to go into executive session, please?
Absolutely. So the need is for discussion of leasing, purchase, or sale of real estate by a public governmental body.
Perfect. And am I okay to go and do that roll call, though?
Absolutely.
Wonderful. Mr. Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Braun?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Pace Snook?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher? And Mr. Shiverdecker?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative. We will go into executive.